Happy Birthday! Eni Betsukukuulu. Felicia! Soho de. Ounyamotye. N'oumouikem Olubou. Moa Jerimaya Nekutos. Osaaka. Ayowah. Aine wishi Happy Birthday! Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Onyama lé guo ne gua bia o. Eguama o, onyama o. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o, eguama. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o. Do eguama o, onyama o. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o, eguama. Eni Betsukukuulu, noume kené i. Ounyamotye, nou noume kené i. Oyama o, onyama o. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o, eguama. Moa Jerimaya ne kené mi. Moa Kutosin, noume kené i. Oyama o. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o, eguama. Ayowah, noume kené i. Oyata bia lo, wadutine kené mi. Oyama o, onyama o. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o, eguama.
Graceful occasion, thank you very much. Please, can we celebrate this man? Please put your hands together for him. Thank you very much. In our culture, we don't say elderly people tell lies. But there's one part of what he said that is not true. He said, "If you need anything, come to me." "Please, if you need money, don't come to me." "Me too, I need money." "Please, let me come to you." Alright, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. My name is MC Fantasy. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. My name is MC Fantasy. And I've brought good greetings all the way from Chicago. Is anybody from Chicago in the building? If you're from Chicago, make some noise! I trust my Chicago people. They know they carry laughs. I hope my Onicha people are here. People, kwe no! People, kwe no! People, kwe shre de! Ah, they are here, they are here. And one of the things I have realized about Igbo people is, they can spend money. Those people, they get money. Igbo's business and money is five and six. If you see any Igbo that does not have a business, he's not an Igbo man. He said that he's planning to be, to have one, or he's still learning with his master. So, Igbo people, they have money. And tonight, we're gonna be celebrating. And to our American friend, just a quick announcement. Very shortly, when the party's going on, you'll be seeing people throwing money on the celebrant and throwing money to celebrate her. Please, in case some of you might know her from Chukwue, she's not a stripper. When you see people throwing money on her, it doesn't mean she's a stripper. That's the African culture, and that's how we celebrate our loved ones. We throw our hard-earned money on them to celebrate them. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, DJ, if you're ready, let's turn it off. Ladies and gentlemen, can we rise up on our feet to welcome the birthday girl? Distinguished guests, please stand up. Stand up, stand up, stand up! Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together as we welcome Eni, Enfetsukukuulu, Onochie!
Felicia! Soho de. Ounyamotye. N'oumouikem Olubou. Moa Jerimaya Nekutos. Osaaka. Ayowah. Aine wishi Happy Birthday! Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o. Eguama o, onyama o. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o, eguama. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o.
This is the birthday girl. Ninety years today. Very strong and agile. Wow!
Eni Betsukukuulu, noume kené i. Ounyamotye, nou noume kené i. Oyama o, onyama o. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o.
She has a man who is very strong. Agile!
Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o, eguama. Ayowah, noume kené i. Oyata bia lo, wadutine kené mi. Oyama o, onyama o. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Eguama. Ogo sima! Anye ona walo kalanya o, ne kené go bia se nokadéléle. Nanyani, ibetsukukuulu. Nonya ke man man ne kené lomene kadiyo. Oyama dènwa. Ibo siaroka ni ruki ke wetesie. Okele go na risi ke noki ke wetan. Ne kadiyo, onyama lé ma. Amalé guo ne gua ma o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o. Eguama o, nanyo. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o, eguama. Ibetzukulu, onyama lé. Ounyamotye, noume kené i. Oyama o, onyama o. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o, eguama. Ayowah, noume kené i. Ibo siaroka ni ruki ke wetan. No walo, onyama o. Amalé guo ne gua bia o. Oyama lé guo ne gua bia o, eguama. Okele go ni le go, ne kené go bia se nokadéléle. Ayowah. Ibetzukukuulu. Nonya ke man man ne kené lomene kadiyo. Ibetzukukuulu, noume go. 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 Ounyamotye. Nanyo ke man man ne kené lomene kadiyo. N'oula. Yo, omyama dènwa. Yes, sir.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen. You can't hold my mother for 30 minutes. You can't sit down. Come back to us after now. You can't hold the rest 5 minutes. You can't sit down. Ha ha ha! Oyama, happy birthday! Happy birthday! Oh yeah, happy birthday! Happy birthday! Oyama, happy birthday! Okele go ni le go, ne kené go bia se nokadéléle. Hey, happy birthday! Happy birthday! Happy birthday! Come on now! All from Mama Asnayi. Mama Asnayi. Hey! Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on! Hey! Oya, 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 oya! Alright, we may be seated. We may be seated. We may be seated. Oya, happy birthday! Happy birthday! Alright, ladies and gentlemen, sit down. Sit down, come on, back to us, sir. Ha ha, ha ha, ha ha, ha ha! Hey! Oya, 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 oya! Oyama, happy birthday! Oyama, happy birthday! Eba gosiba. Na, na so, na so. Ibetzukuya. Oyama, happy birthday! Ebenzukukuulu. N'ouye ke man man ne kené lomene kadiyo. Oyama dènwa. What, 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 what? What, what? Hello, hello, hello! Hello, hello! Mama, you say yes! Oya, 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 oya! Oya! Omo yesi, mokyo, ayana nesé. Bela, 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 we. Omo n'akwa, n'akwa, n'akwa. Omo yesi, mokyo, ayana nesé. Ebenzukukuulu. Alright, let Mama pray, sit down, please. Let Mama pray, sit down. Oya, please, help Mama. Help Mama, over there, over there, over there. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, sit down. Wow! I'd like everybody to be seated right now. Blessed with this long life. I, when the children of the celebrant reached out to me and they told me about the birthday, like they would like me to come and host it. I was shocked, I didn't hear very well. I said, "Please, how old do you think Mama is celebrating?" I had to ask like twice, they said 90. I'm like, wow! God, I'm just using Mama as a point of contact to everybody present here tonight. I pray, as we are celebrating with Mama tonight, we will live long to see our 90th birthday as well in Jesus' name. But since I'm not an ordained pastor, for now, yet, I'd like to welcome our Father in the Lord, who is gonna be leading us with the opening prayer tonight, to usher us into this beautiful occasion. Please, if your hands are not busy, I'd like you to jam your hands together as we welcome Reverend Father Okonkwo to lead us with that short opening prayer. And please, put your hands together for Reverend Father Okonkwo.
My dear brothers and sisters in Christ, I want to start this prayer with him, who everybody knows, and it's from our dear mother, celebrating 90 years. What can I say? Thank you, Jesus! All I have to say, thank you, Jesus! Thank you, Jesus! Thank you, Jesus! All I have to say, thank you, Jesus! All I have to say, thank you, Jesus! My dear brothers and sisters, is this by Mama's power that she's 90 years today? No, but the power of God, who formed her, who knew her by name, who have given her this year, 90 years. The scripture said, 70 years we have, 80 years we are strong. But Mama is 90 years. If Mama not strong, is a very strong woman. So, please, let us bow our heads in silence and prayer. Reverend Father, we thank you today, as we gather this evening to celebrate Mama 90 years today. Father, nothing is impossible for you to do. Nothing is stealing from you. You formed her, you know her by name. As we gather here to rejoice with her, we continue to ask you, Father, to give her your strength, courage, and perseverance. Continue to nurture her with good health of mind and body. We thank you, Father, for, as we gather here this evening, may your blessing rest upon all of us. May your wisdom rest upon our dear mother today, as we continue to lift her up in your name. Father, you said to us, "Trust in me. You are there with us all of us." And so, Mama, if you don't know, Mama is a very strong, dedicated, Catholic member. Very strong. This is not half-half, very strong. And we continue to pray for her, that our Lord Jesus Christ will continue to bless you, to guide you and protect you. Brothers and sisters, thank you for coming to celebrate this day with Mama. At the end of this celebration, as we go back home, may good Lord lead you safe and sound. May what we are going to eat and drink be in the honor and glory of our Lord Jesus Christ. And may good Lord bless you and keep you. What can I say? Thank you, Jesus! All I have to say, thank you, Jesus! All I have to say, thank you. What shall I say? Unto my Father, what I have to say is thank you. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Lord. See, all I have to say is thank you. For the breath in my lungs. Thank you for the strength.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Can we put our hands together once again for Reverend Father Okonkwo? Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, sir. God bless you. I said something earlier. I don't know if some of you got it. I said, "When you celebrate men of God, you are increasing your chances of making heaven." Does anybody agree with me? Somebody said, "No, it's not in the Bible." Before you go and think, it's me that made that up myself. Let me confess. Alright, I'm gonna proceed to recognizing some of the children that God has blessed Mama with. Ladies and gentlemen, currently as I speak, Mama has... Who knows how many number of children Mama has right now? Who can guess? Did you say 16? Uh uh, that's too much now. Eh? No idea, okay. Mama has eight surviving children to the glory of God. Can we put our hands together for Mama? Now, I'm gonna be recognizing them. Please, when I call their name, I'd like the children of the particular person to please stand up for recognition and then let's put a big round of applause for these people because these are the people that came together to organize this party so that we can celebrate a wonderful woman like this, alright? Ladies and gentlemen, the first person I'm gonna recognize right now is the first daughter of Mama. What's the name of the first daughter in Igbo land? What did you call first daughter? Ada, 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 eh? Eh eh, Ada. This is the Ada of the family. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for... Please, some of these names, they are very traditional Igbo names. So, permit me if I murder some of these names, but I'll try my best to pronounce the word. Her name is Odoseaku Joseph Onochie. Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for her. Where is she? Where is she? Wow, please celebrate her! Eh, ah, eh, ah, eh, ah, eh, ah. Please, come, 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 come. Let's start it. This is the Ada of the family. See, she's very beautiful, like her mother. Like mother, like daughter. Eh, ah, eh, ah, eh, ah, eh. Mother Joseph. Mother Joseph. Mother Joseph. Alright, bring it down, bring it down, DJ. It's not a baby, bring it down. Bring it down, it's not a baby, it's Mama's birthday. Thank you very much, God bless you, Mama. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, the next person I'm going to recognize... Otherwise... Let me breathe in, breathe out before I pronounce the name. It's no other than Nabue. Nabue, ah, thank you very much, my brother. George Onochie. Can you put your hands together for my daddy? Put your hands together! Wow! This man looks so handsome, oh! Mama, you, you, you broke the tape, you, Mama. Look at this man! Uh uh! Wonderful! Alright, thank you, DJ. Thank you, DJ. Thank you, DJ. God bless you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Wow! Can we put our hands together once again for him? Put your hands together. My brother, should be you are the one that help you with your name. Eh, don't stay too far. So that anyone I want to murder, you quickly, you understand. Eh, we'll share my battles. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, the next person I'm gonna recognize is another strong man. Breathe in, breathe out. Ugona bo. Ugona bo, eh eh. Chinyelugo. Eh eh, every Onochie. Please, put your hands together for him. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, sit down. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, DJ Eslo. Beautiful, beautiful. You feel like saying, "Eslo, you, you live in the eastern part very well." Because all these your songs, I don't know where you are getting these songs from. They are good songs. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, now we are gonna go to another female. We're gonna go to another female. But before then, let me go to a very, very special man all the way in Nigeria. He's the fourth child, but he's not here, but we're gonna celebrate him as well before I go to the female, alright? His name is Inabseja. I believe somebody is streaming live, so he's probably watching us. Eh eh, let me start by saying, his name is Chief Richard Onochie, the Igoba Akalam Uba of Onicha. Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for him. Oya, let me greet him on the phone. Mama's ready now, Mama's ready. Oya, spread the voice, spread the voice! I'll collect the money and transfer it to him. Oya, spread the info. Spread the info. Oya, spread the info. Ah ha! Let Chief know that he's celebrated in America tonight. Eh eh, oya, spread the voice. Come on now, for Chief. Chief. Chief Richard Onochie. Oya, oya, celebrating. Oya, oya, celebrating. Oya, oya, celebrating. Chief Richard, 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 Chief Richard. Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very, very much. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for Chief Richard. Alright, I'm gonna go to the next person, and that is... My mind is telling me this woman is a very beautiful woman, even though I have no seen her. But my mind is just telling me she's a very beautiful woman. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for Ugodi Bouze Elizabeth. Please put your hands together for the great girl of Mama. Alright, now, let's go, let's go. Eh eh, Aniwu! I think she'll be very beautiful! Come on! Eh? 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 Ha ha, ha ha, ha ha, ha ha! Oya, 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 oya! Hey! Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on! Ah ha! Eh! Alright, ladies and gentlemen, sit down. Ladies and gentlemen, sit down. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, sit down. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, sit down. Thank you very much, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, please, let's celebrate Ugopoeze Rosemary Okoloji.
Give her your work!
DJ, let's go! Ah, look at the beauty of your eyes! Mama, you're strong, eh, you're strong, eh! Meta Piki, Meta Piki, this song! Meta Piki, Rosemary Ogologhi, eh! Hey! Oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah! Oh yeah, celebrate, celebrate! Come on, come on, come on! Alright, let's have God's mercy. Let's have God's mercy. Let's have God's mercy, thank you very much. I have to be very partial at this point, I'm very sorry. The next victim, oh, sorry, the next person... I'm gonna have collected my ballots. The next person I'm about to call right now, I'm gonna be a little bit partial because he's... He's the one who hired me. He called me. He has been a supporter of my brand for many years. I hosted his wife's birthday here many few years ago. So I'm gonna specially invite him and I'm gonna hand the recognition on that part. Ladies and gentlemen, please, can we also celebrate one of the very good son of Mama, Ojinaka Stevie Onochiye? Oh yeah, now let's celebrate this man, a wonderful man! Thank you, thank you. Alright, let's return back to our seat, ladies and gentlemen. Let's return back to our seat, we are waiting for you to return back, please. Alright, because of our time, we're just gonna go straight to the cake. People need to eat. Wow, this cake is so beautiful and so colorful. Can you guys see that the cake is even revolving? It's revol... It's turning on the yo, it's turning on the yo, it's turning. Alright, please bring Mama when she's ready so that she can cut a birthday cake. It's time for the cutting of the cake, Mama. I'd like you to place your hand on the knife. Beautiful, beautiful. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, who can tell me how old is Mama tonight? Tell me! Ninety! So this is where we are gonna cut the cake, Mama. It's okay, I'm glad that you can capture it. So this is what we are gonna do, ladies and gentlemen, I need your help. We're gonna start counting from ninety and we start counting upward, okay? Mama, we're gonna start counting from ninety upward. When you get to the number that you want to leave, before God calls you, you've cut the cake. If you like, cut it at one thousand. So we're gonna count together, DJ, hold it, hold it, Abey. Mama, you understand me, right? Eh, we'll start counting ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two. So when you get to the number, even if it's one thousand, cut it by there, alright? Eh, Mama is ready. So we want to know what age, how long Mama want to live. DJ, hold it, hold it, Abey. I want people to call us this with me. Everybody, are you ready to count with me? If you're ready to count with me, say, "Yeah, yeah!" Alright, Mama, let's go. Everybody, let's go! Ninety! Ninety-one! Ninety-two! Ninety-three! Ninety-four! Ninety-five, Mama did not cut it. Ninety-six, ah, Mama said, "No." Ninety-seven, Mama said, "No." Ninety-eight, Mama said, "Oh, yes she." Ninety-nine, Mama said, "No, no, no." One hundred, Mama said, "No." Nine hundred and one! One hundred and two! Mama, one hundred and three, Mama! One hundred and four, Mama! Mama, by one hundred and five, you have forty left of. Mama, one hundred and six! One hundred and seven! One hundred and eight! One hundred and nine! One hundred and ten! One fifteen! One twenty, Mama! One thirty, Mama! One fifty, Mama! One fifty! Mama says, "One fifty!" Wow! Please bring Mama back to our seat. Alright, please, can we have the children, please, children, come and join Mama? Please come and join Mama. Mama, how do you feel tonight?
I'm fine.
Bless God. All the children, please, come and surround Mama, surround her, Mama stay in the center. All the children, surround Mama, eh, hey. And if there's a great-grandchildren, come. Even the one in the stomach, the one in the belly, come, all of you, come, we are receiving all of you. Ah ha! You know the song! Oh yeah, dance, Mama, dance, Mama, dance, Mama! Celebrate her! Celebrate her, I swear! Everybody say, "Ezofe!" Ah ha! Alright, let's move back, let's move back. Please move back, let Mama move back. Please! Ah ha! Ezofe? Make you go cry today! Oh yeah, say, Mama, I love you, see? Say, Mama, I love you, see? Oh yeah, say, Mama, I love you, see? Say, Mama, I love you, see? Oh yeah, say, Mama, I love you, see? Say, Mama, I love you, see? Alright! Say, Mama, I love you, see? Mister Vok Osili, he has a message from the mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, please celebrate this man. Put your hands together!
Ifedchupulu, of the Indianapolis City County Council. First of all, good evening, everyone! In all respects, to the celebrant for this evening, on behalf of the Indianapolis City County Council and the mayor of the city of Indianapolis, we have a proclamation for you to honor and to celebrate your birthday. I will give you the synopsis of it, and it is this: That we in the city of Indianapolis recognize and celebrate... By the way, everyone, it is one page long and everyone has many things to do tonight. So I will get to the meat of the matter, how's that? It is this, that the city of Indianapolis recognizes and celebrates the ninetieth birthday of Mrs. Ifedchupulu Felicia Chupudi Onochiye and wish her many, many, many happy years to come. And may that be one hundred and fifty as we learn this evening. Is there an amen in the house? So the council and the mayor extend in gratitude for the contributions you have made to our community. Most particularly, the children that you have born. And if I may indulge myself, most, most particularly in the person of your fine son, Chinye Henry Onochiye. Happy birthday! On behalf of the city of Indianapolis.
Ladies and gentlemen, please celebrate this gentleman. Celebrate him, put your hands together, put your hands together! Wonderful, wonderful. Wonderful. Alright, right about now, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the family members, I'd like to invite Ugodi Boueze Elizabeth Izeku to give us a felicitation and remarks about the celebration. Excited guests, ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for Mrs. Elizabeth Izeku.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ugodi Boueze Elizabeth Izeku. This is child and second daughter of the celebrant, Ifedchupulu Felicia Onochiye. But first, I want to thank each one of you for taking our time from your busy schedule to come here and...
Chief Richard Igwaba, my immediate senior. Who could not make it here for your birthday, but he is here in spirit with us. On behalf of my other siblings, Mama, I say, "Happy ninetieth birthday." May today be as beautiful as your heart. Your love...
Please let's be that Mama has given birth to lots of wonderful children, yes or no? Even me said, "I only have two sons." Now, I'm thinking, maybe I should have one more. Because the way Mama has so many children that surrounds her is kind of... Thing is, I'm scared because if I should have another child, my mind is telling me it's gonna be a girl. And I'm so terrified with female child. And let me explain why. I went to visit my sister three weeks ago in Texas. So she's under the weather a little bit, you know, she was kind of sick. So we took my sister to her bedroom. And when we were about to leave the room, me and our daughter were trying to cover her in the blanket. And the next thing our daughter said was, "Mommy, I know you are very sick, eh, oh yeah, go to bed, rest in peace." When my sister heard "rest in peace," she jumped up, she said, "I'm no longer sick again." You know, those are one of the things that terrify me about having a female child. Ladies and gentlemen, now on behalf... Onabueyi George Onochiye, to give us the vote of ten.
Onabuei George Onochie, to give us the vote of 10. Please put your hands together for him. Put your hands together.
Good evening, everybody. We are very happy to have you all here to celebrate my mother's 90th birthday. My mother, we love you. We are all very grateful about our mom. And we are very, very thankful to God for keeping her alive all these years, to guide us, to love us, and to continue to encourage us in life. We love you mom, and happy 90th birthday. Thank you.
I'm going to open the floor for the first two fastest finger, who would like to give remarks about grandma. Doctor Winguwet, please come. She's going to be the first one. Can we put our hands together for Doctor? She's a close relative of Mama. And if you are wondering, who is this beautiful woman sitting beside our grandma tonight? That's one of our best friend. She clocked 93, right? One of the three. Mama, how old are you, around? 90, okay. She clocked 90, three days ago, right? So they are twin sisters, okay? Please, can we celebrate her as well?
Good evening, everybody. I'm so glad to see the whole family and everybody happy. And everybody is releasing. You guys, whenever you smile, keep on smiling, because you are releasing a very nice thing that will make you continue to be stronger. See, she's smiling. I'm going to just say one or two things about my auntie. I see there are some of the children that they don't know that. There are some that, um, knows me. Some of them, I didn't start. My auntie, I'm not saying because today we're having a party, or because she's here. She's a very wonderful woman. Very, very wonderful woman. She became, she became a friend to me, and I gained admission to go to secondary school. She... I was saying, I was supposed to go to where they call Ela de Mone. And my grandmother said, "No, no, no, it's too far from my vision. You can't go to Ela de Mone." And my auntie, she said, "You know what? There's a new secondary school at Omae." And my auntie said, "It doesn't matter, don't worry, because you can." And she, she and her husband, they're so wonderful. Every fiftieth day, my auntie will cook and make sure I'm sober, bring anything, anything I want. People always tease me, "Tell your auntie to bring this." Tell your auntie, she will bring it. No question asked. And I want to use this opportunity to thank God. Because when I first came here, she also visited me. She visited me in California in the 70s, when I, when I first came. She's a good friend. And I want to thank God for a life that she's enjoying and spending, and continuing to have a good, enjoyable life. I'm going to bring my card that I brought. And I thank you for everything you have done.
Thank you, ma'am. Please, can we put our hands together for her? Put your hands together. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, please, shall we all raise our glasses? Whatever you're drinking, please raise your glasses, ladies and gentlemen. Let's raise our glasses. Can we get some glass for Mama? Whatever I say, I want you to say amen, alright? Are we ready? So, to toast to a great life, long life, I thought you'd say amen. Sound out for Mama. God bless over our children. God bless over the grandchildren. God bless over the great grandchildren. God bless over the great, great grandchildren. And I pray that everybody present here tonight, will return back to our home, our residence station, safely, in Jesus' name. And first importantly, when all of us die and go home and die, we'll be in heaven, in Jesus' name. Alright, go ahead and cheers, ladies and gentlemen. Cheers, and toast to a good life. Cheers, several, several, several. Alright, alright, let's drink. Alright, can we bring Mama to the dance floor? All the children of Mama, all my children of Mama, I'll bring her to the dance floor. It's time to party, ladies and gentlemen. It's time to set up, set up, set up, set up. Please bring Mama to the dance floor. Let's bring Mama to the dance floor.
My name is Henry Onochie. I'm the third born of Felicia Onochie, who is celebrating her 90th birthday today. I'm the second son and the third born. This is a great day. We can't thank God enough to be able to see our mom at the age of 90. This is something that everybody dreams of. And not only is this beginning, we're going to hopefully have another 100 year birthday very soon. So we thank God for all the things that's happening today. Mama is a matron of the family. She is the person who keeps the family together. That is the reason why God continues to keep her for us. We can't thank God enough for Mama. Mama is being a very big leader, a mom with a good heart. And then we thank her for everything that she's done for us. The family is together, we are solid, and we thank God for everything.
My name is Odoseyaku Josephine Onochie.
And how, what's your relationship with Mama?
Oh, I'm the first child of Mama. I'm the one that opened her womb.
You are the Ada?
Ada, and the first child.
Alright, but, so what, how do you feel today?
Oh, I'm so happy, and I'm full of joy, that my mom turned 90 years today. So it's a very big thing, and I'm very grateful to God. She is really a blessing to us. Mama is everything you can talk of a good mother. My, in fact, words cannot describe Mama. If you say, "I should start talking of Mama now," what would I say? The only thing I would tell you is that anything you can think of a good mother is Mama. Mama is a great blessing to us. Mama is intelligent. Mama is a good mother and a good... She nurtured us very well. She loved all her children without anybody at the back. I love Mama so much. She loved me and my family, so there is nothing else I can say. Just take it that Mama is everything.
Hello, I am Unabuei Onochie, the dear brother of Onochie family. This is a very great occasion, and I'm glad that we're happy to stay here and witness my mother's 90th birthday. God bless her.
Hello, everybody. I am Ugobezze Rosemary Okonkwoji. I am the eighth child, eight, when I mean eight, eight amongst my siblings. Yeah, I'm the eighth child of Ifed Chupulu Felicia Onochie. And I am very, very happy today. Today is a very great and joyous occasion, joyous day for each and every one of her children, all our friends, all our well-wishers, all our family members. Because we are able to be alive to witness our mom 90th year birthday celebration. We're not talking about 90 days, we are talking about 90 years. To raise nine children or 10 children, that's not a joke. She was able to raise 10 of us, together with my dad, late watching a medal, Stephen Iwobi Onochie. They did a very great job. We all turned out very well, all doing very well in different, different sectors of the society. And we are so, so grateful for Mama. And we are very happy to witness this 90th year celebration. We've already lost two of the family members, and it's just the eight of us remaining. So we are so happy and glad we're able to witness our mom's 90th birthday celebration. She's a very great woman. Big, great industrialist, enterprise, enterpriser. And she is a fashionista. You see her walking in in style. She is 90, but she looks 60. And that's the work of God. We are so blessed, and she's so blessed. We are so grateful. She was everything to us, raised us up very well, each and every one of us. She was on us till we got to this stage, and she's still there, watching and guiding over us. We are very, very thankful. And I say, "Happy birthday, Mama. We all love you."
I am Stephen, I'm Ogina Kastebin Onochie, the last son of the celebrant today. The celebrant is my mom, and I'm wishing a very happy 90th birthday. Today's a great day. We are so happy to be honoring her with a 90th birthday party. I want to thank everybody that came here. Want everybody that came here. We're going to have fun today. And I hope that everybody after the event, everybody will go back home peacefully.
And the impact of the feast we're having today is that we're having my mother's 90th birthday feast. And I'm very happy being among the people celebrating my mother's 90th birthday feast. And I'm happy, she is happy, seeing her 90th birthday. And I welcome all the people that come to the feast, and I hope, and I hope that they will have joy throughout the celebration.
So, can you say one thing that you can remember when you are growing, growing up? One thing that Mama did for you that you can never forget?
Okay, the thing that my mother did for me that I can never forget were that my mother nurtured me. She made sure I did not do bad things, that I did not go and get misled by my friends to do bad things that would disgrace our family. And she made sure that I obeyed her words when she's doing right. And she made sure that my behaviors among the society and towards her were also nice to people.
Mommy, I love you. Happy birthday to you.
Mommy, I love you. Happy birthday. Have a nice celebration today. And I wish you many more years in returns.
My name is Eni Oyachibuleze, I'm a Onochie. I am also Mama, the birthday girl. Mama is my mother-in-law, okay? So, um, my, I am the wife of the youngest. Ugona Abogina Okonkwoji. So Mama is a very... She's a great woman, woman of substance, great qualities, great behaviors, you know? She has a lot of things that I have learned from Mama, you know? And she's just a great person, always prayerful, always encouraging us to be good, to be at our best. Mama is very encouraging, she's loving and caring. So Mama is such a good, you know, she's such a good lady. And I am blessed to be one of her daughter-in-laws. So what I expect from this party is a good turnout. We have a lot of people coming from far and wide, a lot of people from out of state, out of the country. So for a 90th birthday, I would like us to, I'm looking forward to us celebrating a 90, Mama's 90th birthday. 90 is not 19, it's not 9, you know, it's 90. So I would like to also tap into that blessing, you know, to be up to that age and strong as Mama is. So I am looking forward to a great celebration today. Thank you.
Onabu, Watine, Ugona Abou Watine Nell, Onochie Okonkwoji. Moabo, the first son-in-law of Mama Ifed Chupulu Onochie. Moana noa dea wa. Oesbo wa inkob. Ochukulula anyolo. Owedebendrea, up to this age, 90 years, abro beliben. She's a great, she's a great woman. She's been struggling all her life, and she was able to rear all the children up to this level. And everybody's doing fine. And I happen to be one of those who, I'm happy being in the family. You know, this is a good, good family. So, onwarebo, songgeti ene naboro, na chuku kainayon. To give her more life, many more years with good health. Etu aivule, anarusile, ekangwa ina bambo. Ne, ne mercy beke. Onesi lo ngwe, ne nyelo ngweaka. Because as a help, and a render, so you can understand. Ona de 90 years, abro ejo. So no nukui ve kob, tata bnu kubos. So any dia le wa, ekene kamo, anyo bina dia lo ni, ije noa. Ukua inge di biya, ukunu di biya, kunu ge di we na. Ukua ma o unu, manjidua ma di unu. Oga adilo anyo bina mama, dalo no.
Yeah, happy birthday to our mom, you know? Mama, wishing you all the best, you know? I get to know Mama through her son Stephen. Stephen is a very good friend to me. And his wife, Amaka, is also a good friend to my wife Fatih. So it's been a long time the family has been together, you know, with friends who are their family. So we are here to support Mama and wish her all the best. Happy birthday, Mama. Keep living strong, keep living long. We love you, okay? Happy birthday.